My name is Art Whitman, Chairman of the Shasbury Select Board. We'd like to call this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order on Monday, December 6th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. First order of business, is there any conflict of interest or anything showing on the schedule?
No.
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 Next on the agenda is minutes. We have two minutes or two meetings, November 15th. Entertainer motion to accept them is sent to you as printed.
So moved.
Move by Tony, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, 400. And the next one is November 29th. Entertainer motion to accept them is printed.
So moved.
Tony, second by Mike. Any discussion?
The only thing I have there is we'll have to discuss it on the men, men and the mask. I believe I said that I opposed it because if an individual employer or business wanted to make the wear mask, it was their option.
Okay.
And that wasn't the minutes.
Okay. Should that be noted?
Yeah, we'll take this tape and I'll run it by Shelley.
Okay.
Get it up there.
All right. So noted. Other than that, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry 400. I have some warrants. First one is a payroll warrant. Twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents.
So moved.
Move by Tony.
Second.
Second by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I propose. So carried, 400. It goes out here, Elvis. We won't, we won't call you any different names.
There, Elvis, slide over here, person.
Next, I have a warrant. Twenty-eight thousand, sixty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
So moved.
Move by Tony.
Second.
Second by Ken. Pardon's over a thousand dollars. Okay, G.A. Bow Fuel for eleven hundred dollars. Another one for twelve hundred dollars. R.C.S. Consulting, that's for Silver, I assume, a thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Rentals and sum, eleven hundred dollars. And Sullivan, eighteen hundred, fifty-one dollars. Okay, and for a BLTC, our property and casualty insurance, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, seventy-five cents. Is that a?
That's a quarterly payment.
quarterly payment. And weekly daily, eleven hundred dollars. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 400. Does anybody have any announcements? Think it should be noted that some people on the both the DRB and the planning board.
Yeah, we have a list of that coming up later. I can do it now if you want.
Okay.
At the bottom of my pile here. So, Lieutenant Officers, elected town officers coming up. And on this election cycle would be from the Select Board, Art Whitman and Ken Harrington. The auditors of Michael Paslan's appointment is up. The trustees of public funds, there's one opening. And then on the Development Review Board, there is an opening that has existed for some time and there'll be two expirations next year. The Planning Commission has one person that will be expiring next year. They currently fully staffed, so. So DRB is permanently short, one person. So if anybody has any interest in that, they can apply at any time.
Okay. Any other announcements? Public comments? I assume that you're here for that, Jim?
Well, at least you listen.
Okay, but do you have anything you want to say at this time?
No, not really.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Treasurer Report, Melon.
Yeah, where do I go? Here?
You can't do it up there without tripping over a wire, so if you want to just pull a chair up to the left side of the panel, use the projector.
To the?
The left side of the projector. Standing projector, this thing in the middle.
Like this?
Well, that's fine. That's the right side.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Can we look at the cash flow? We've already talked about almost all this, so I make this really short and sweet. November's all about taxes. We're done with that now. It ended up being a slightly better than average year as far as delinquent taxes go. Last year was slightly worse than average, as we expected it to be, but if you want to go down to the bottom, we can look at the comparison to budget, and last year you can see very similar as usual, especially this time of year. You don't expect it to be all that different. Last year, the revenues were high because of that sales of equipment that I always mentioned, but other than that, we're looking like we're very much in line with last year. If you want to look at the reserve funds, you can see in that credits line, that's the only activity was water payments. The water bills are out and they are due this Wednesday. So make sure if you're on town water, make sure you get those payments to me on Wednesday, by Wednesday. Let's see, so in other business, what have we been up to? Still recovering, but yes. We finished our response to Sullivan Powers, so we, have you heard back from Jordan, Dave?
No.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we should have a documents by the end of the week, though.
Yeah, it's, we're, so we're putting a bow on the audit, and so that's, that's good news, got that behind us. Hmm, I can't think of anything else. I'm, I'm busy. It sounds like I'm not doing anything, but it's stuff you guys don't need to know about.
Yeah.
Any questions about any of that?
No, also.
Okay, Rick, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
If I can suggest a change in the order here.
Yeah.
I'm sure someone from the Planning Commission is going to join us for the bylaws. So we do have Jenny from McCullough Free Library, who would be next on the community appropriations. Do you just want to switch the order for community appropriations?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Yeah, what we're going to do now is we're going to several, several people, several applications for community improved, uh, community appropriations came in more than what we did last year. So our policy, which we don't really have a good one, kind of suggested that we at least have them come in and explain why they want more money than last year.
Back the last time this was really discussed in any detail by the board was back in 2011. And generally, it's been followed that the Select Board debates decisions on any increase, whether to grant it or not. This year, I'm going to really ask the board to approve a policy. We've had one request for a 500% increase in their funding. And it's, the community appropriations have gone up 149% since 2018. And it's, it's becoming a large percentage of the budget these days. So when I ask the board again this year that we need to adopt the policy, that essentially, it's a BLCT model that any group that required, that requests an increase would have to submit a new petition for the increase, because it's really a voter thing. And every three years, a petition would have to be submitted for the groups, because many towns do it that way. I think back in 2011, when this was last researched, I was reading through it again today. A lot of towns, they were kind of all over the place. But the majority of it was either it's all by petition, or the Select Board just picks back and forth. And I think a formalized procedure would be a lot better, because it's major increase, it's four thousand dollars. It's like I said, it's a 500% increase being requested by one group. To prove that, then leaves everything open to how did you come to that decision, and then why can't I have five thousand more? Whereas if we just say, go get a petition, and, you know, petition for the increase, then fine. The new group that's coming in this year, seniors, so I kept saying it's wrong, Bennington County Seniors, I believe it is. They're a new group, they've wanted a petition, they'll be here in two weeks. But they have a petition, so they can go on the ballot, it's just, that's the normal procedure, so. Just some, some background there, because it has gone up substantially in the last few years.
Can you say who the group is, what are five hundred?
It's the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless.
Okay.
And I did go back and said, this is current a couple of times, I did go back and say, well, that's 500%, that's four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And they'll be here on the 20th to discuss that.
So after that, Jenny, welcome. Can you hear us?
I can. Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't, it's good to see you. So the McCullough Library has, has submitted its application for community appropriations. We are requesting an increase for 2021. We did not request an increase in 2020. But the, the basic cost of goods and services has gone up, and we run a pretty tight ship. Believe we're asking for fifteen hundred more this year. Let me double check that to make sure. Oh, I'm sorry, twelve hundred. Twelve hundred more, which bring the total ask up to twenty-five thousand, two hundred. Like to point out that this is the lowest percentage increase we're asking from all three of the municipalities that support the library. So Bennington and North Bennington will be bearing the brunt of the requested increase for, for funding from municipalities. And we've also set an ambitious goal for fundraising. We do what we can to sustain ourselves through fundraising, our annual appeal. This year, after a hundred years, we needed new chairs, for example. And people will have the opportunity to sponsor new chairs at the library. But I also like to point out that we are amidst a massive renovation project at the library. New restrooms, new electrical rewiring, HVAC system. Oh goodness, so family-friendly, accessible restrooms on both floors, new plumbing, a drinking fountain, and we're turning a former projectionist closet on the second floor, back when they showed movies on the second floor of the library, into the Laurinovak Memorial Meeting Room. So it'll be a laptop bar and small meeting space. This project, which should be upwards of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, has all been raised through grants, a generous request, donations, and some ARPA funds through the Village of North Bennington. So it's been a lot of fundraising, because we don't want to push those expenses off on our supporting municipalities. We've been doing it ourselves, so. But that said, had a very good year. You know, circulation has remained stable and safe through both the lead-up to construction and the lingering and irritable effects of the coronavirus pandemic. We've already welcomed almost three hundred people, new members this year, which is pretty much on par with what we do every year. People in, in the last 12 months have borrowed more than, so digital services are becoming increasingly part of what we do. People borrowed more than four thousand eBooks and digital audiobooks. And we started a video streaming service this year, which is being paid for with part of our D to D budget. So, because people are streaming now, so we're adapting to serve those needs. And, yeah, that's, that's kind of where we are. And our plans for next year are to complete this construction project, which is kind of a once in every couple generations sort of a project, to put everything where it should be at the library. We're planning a grand reopening in the year ahead. So that's probably going to be a week of extended hours with tours, some speechifying, you're all invited. It's going to be kind of a rededication, because the library has entered its 100th year. Well, it'll be in its 100th year when we reopen. And, yeah, that's, that's kind of where we are. The year ahead, we're using ARPA funds that came through the Department of Libraries. And those funds can be used for very specific things, like new collections. But we will have a tool library to lend. So if you need a very particular sort of tool, or, oh goodness, people ask for baking equipment, or a baby scale, or a place to fix your bike, you can do that at the library. And what else? Oh, and we're going to be heading into our next round of strategic planning for the next five years. So we'll be soliciting feedback via community surveys and guided conversations to figure out what people want from us and how we can deliver that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? No?
Jenny, what is the percentage of, how many Shasbury residents are using the McCullough Library? Do you know?
You know, it's a solid third, so this, this highlights one thing. So we can do another on it. We are going to do what's called a member audit, which is calling up everyone to see if they want to renew their accounts. This is, we're starting this, it's going to be ongoing, which I think will yield a much more accurate count of patrons and active patrons. But if you look at the people who signed up this year, or last year, or our active patrons, across the board, it looks like about a third of our active folks are Shasbury residents. What those raw numbers don't give you is the teachers and daycare centers in, in Shasbury that we support. Or the extent of use generally. So who's using our, our streaming services, or the percentage of use that comes out of that? And we never ask where people are from when they come to our programs. So it's a little hard to gauge. But when I was trying to dice it up, see what I could see in the reports, in our catalog, and that 30% held firm, it didn't matter which report I ran.
How much have you asked for North Bennington for their community appropriations budget?
Yeah, let me pull that up. Let's see here. We asked them for a 10% increase, which would bring it up to twenty, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred. And the largest request we're giving is from North Bennington, and we're requesting forty-five thousand.
What was it?
And that's, that's a 13% increase that we're asking.
What was the 20, the 27,000 was from who?
Twenty-seven thousand is North Bennington. Twenty-seven thousand, four hundred, which is a 10% increase over our, well, it'd be the last two years. We held firm with level funding for all three municipalities last year. With so much uncertainty, it just seemed like the right thing to do. But we have a better grip on what things will cost probably in the year ahead. Hopefully. Did, did that answer your question, Art?
Yes, it did. Yep.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else got any comments or anything? Yeah, Jenny, we have to, we've got to, somebody else is going to be speaking to us. And then next, our next meeting, two weeks from now, there'll be a couple more people, and then we will decide if we have enough, or how much we want to go to the voters for. So I can't really give you an answer right now on, on your request, okay?
Okay, should, should I come back on the 20th, then?
I don't think it's necessary.
I think I would be, I'd say we'll talk to the other two groups, and we'll probably come up with a decision in the beginning of January.
Okay, all right. In the meantime, if there's anything you, you need, any more information or something like that, please ask. Always here to help.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Keep up the good work. You're doing a fantastic job there.
We're having fun, and I hope you'll come and have fun with us.
Okay, man.
Good.
So.
Next, we're tonight with Shire's kids. She's not here. She was going to try and do internet, but through all the wins, perhaps she doesn't have the internet right now, so I will just be scheduled for the 20th.
And, and what you're, keep going and wait for somebody from the Planning Commission?
Well, yeah, we can just move on to the bid openings. And when we get past seven o'clock, if no one logs in, then you can just take the vote.
Yep.
I think they realize that the board isn't interested in making any amendment to it, so maybe they don't intend to.
This is on, on the things that never Chris, he asked me when he came in. I saw Chris, but there two ago, and he didn't mention, I'm sure he did.
Yeah, yeah, I asked today, I asked Shelley, and she said that they intended to log in on Zoom tonight. It's kind of surprising that none of them have so far, so maybe after I told her that the board's not making any changes to it, maybe they decided not to. So if they don't show up by the time we get done, you can just vote dissent to the, to the, uh, vote dissent to the voters. It's a weird way to say that, but.
Okay, well, can we wait until the end to see if they catch up?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll go on to bid openings now. We put out two bids, two different bids. One of them is for a culvert at the very end of Shasbury Hollow. They had a meeting, showed every, showed the potential bidders, what it, what it involved. And our cemetery mowing contract is up. It's a three-year contract?
It's a one year and an option for two more.
Okay, one year with option, two more, so.
It was one bid on each.
Yep, so one, we only received one bidder on each of those. This one is from Weaver for the culvert, obviously. I have a certificate of liability insurance, and the bottom number is sixty thousand dollars.
What we recommend, knowing the numbers, that's in line. We all know Weaver, and we just got questioned, they can do the work, and have worked very well with the town on a number of projects. But I recommend is we just send this, because it's a whole column of different materials there. Just send that to Mike to review, and we'll vote on it at the next meeting.
Yeah, just make sure that everything is.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you ask for? Is that okay?
No, is there a culvert in there that we would want to buy this year?
We are buying this this year. We, we're out of time. Once this is voted on at the next meeting, we have to buy everything. This has to be done by June.
Right, but I mean, I, I don't want to get into.
Oh, no, he's already talked to the culvert companies, because this is a grant, we have this money, we have to buy the culvert, even if we didn't award it, we have the money to buy the culvert.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. No, no, the same thing we did up, we bought the giant culvert.
Yeah, yeah, I just don't want to.
No, yeah.
Be in the conflict.
Twenty-six thousand dollars for the culvert.
For the culvert. Is that a steel culvert or?
It's steel, I believe. CMP, whatever that stands for.
Well, that's why.
What does it have?
CMP.
T M P?
C.
C.
CMP with baffles. I do know, we talked about.
Yeah, it has to have baffles, and it has to have the fish baffles and
Yep.
all that stuff.
No, it's, the moment's positive, it's a steel culvert.
Yeah, I am too, but we'll send it to Mike to make sure that some materials that have been discussed and that hanging on our wants, and we'll take it from there.
Yep.
Yeah, you can just lay it on top.
Okay, and we have this one bidder for the cemetery mowing. Obviously, it's from Jay Coonrad. This was not only a contract for the standard stuff, we also asked him to give us an hourly rate for stuff that we wanted. Okay. Certificate of Insurance. He has a list of what he has for equipment, what he can to prove that he's got enough equipment to do it, and that sort of stuff. Cemetery mowing, one season, thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Two additional seasons, still the same price, thirty-one thousand, two hundred. Hourly rate for other work outside of this contract is sixty-five bucks an hour.
Is that for labor or equipment and labor?
No, I don't think it is. It's, unless he has some great special equipment. But we will, again, I'm going to take that one, and I'll go over, over that one. That's not that much higher than what we're paying now. It's two thousand, five hundred dollars higher than what we're paying now. But it's also the same amount for three years. As far as Jerry goes, Jay's been doing the cemeteries for years, and he's more than a qualified contractor for it. But I'll have to look through the whole thing and talk to Jay about it. And we'll, we'll vote on that at the next meeting also.
Any other questions or anything?
Who's that, who was that?
Jay Coonrad.
Jay Coonrad. Okay, okay. Say what we got.
Same, same.
He's been doing it for years.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we can just go on to the, the still owns on, so we can just go on to the DPW report.
Yep.
Which also isn't very long. Coming off is the repair of the RAM. We got a call from Stevens today, the parts came in. So they expect to repair the transmission next week. So there's no question of going to another source. Other than that, the DPW is in this shoulder season now, where they're cleaning up some things, they may do some brushing within a couple of weeks, but it's a lot of truck maintenance, making sure everything's up to speed for the next snowstorm, and of course, the roads are very wet now, so there'll be a lot of maintenance going on with that. The wind seems to have died down, but it was pretty high before, so hopefully we won't have too many trees that went down. But it is just a season where it's, maybe some of the trucks, do some ditching, do some brushing, and get ready for that storm.
So I asked them, so what broke, always the first snowstorm, you always find all the weak spots. So I asked what broke down, fan belt, universal joint, you name it, same.
Yeah.
Same things. By the end of the, I mean, we're hearing a lot work out.
Yeah.
The first one is always.
Yeah. But other than that, one year, I think we had two go down on the same. Yeah. But better than that, one year, I think we had two go down on the same day when we were still here and, uh, yeah, that was a mess.
Yeah, it's always tough when you're plowed and you're gravitating towards.
Yeah, that's true. It's, it's hard.
If there's something that'll burn, then they'll probably, oh yeah.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? I guess, uh, the warranty on that truck is still within, what, seven or eight thousand miles?
Eight thousand miles to go.
Eight thousand miles to go, so.
We have them do it for free. Is a much better way of doing it, so.
Best price.
Yeah, it is the best price. Free is the best price.
But there's always a discussion about when do we get rid of the thing too, so.
Yeah, uh, that's, that's not coming up for a couple of years yet, so.
Yep.
Uh, we'll bid that out and see what happens then.
Can we do an extended warranty on that truck or not?
Uh, we could. They offer them on everything. I don't know if they would. Now, we didn't opt to get one when we first bought it.
I think you have to do it when you buy it.
When you buy it, I don't think.
I don't think.
I think after they replace the transmission on this warranty, it's unlikely they're gonna give us an extended warranty.
I, I'd, I'd see if we could find an extended warranty on that, even if it had to be aftermarket.
Oh, we could. We'll look into it.
Okay.
We'll see. Uh, we'll see.
I, I'm opposed to that. That, that's like buying insurance or something like that. Unless you're highly leveraged and you don't have the money and you've got the money in reserves.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think you gotta check on it. I mean, with the luck we've had with that truck.
Well, this is a person with, with this dog.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Wow.
I mean, just check on it.
Then we'll just find out.
You know.
See how much it costs.
If it's not too expensive, but where is it?
Lucky thirteen.
Well, we might, we'll move on to the next one.
Yep.
Town meeting. Well, just, uh, we wanted to mention again that that town meeting will be an article, uh, the elimination of elected listers. Shall the voters authorize the elimination of the office of town lister? And replace it with a professionally qualified assessor who will, shall have the same powers, discharge the same duties, the scene that discharge thereof, and the same manner, be subject to the same liabilities as described for listers or the board of listers. Uh, this will be on the ballot, the Australian ballot in March. And this is going on in many, many towns across the state. It's very difficult to get qualified elected listers and, um, this would be, we have, probably we have a pain assessor, and have had for some time. This will just formalize it into having a pain assessor and having a town employee who will be the assessor clerk. And will deal with the public, answer a lot of the questions, but also have a professional to go to, to, uh, answer the technical questions. And that assessor then would have great access here so that he could keep up with the work that needs to be done to get the grand list out on time.
That, that person would also be the go-to person when somebody comes in and want to know what their assessment is and everything else.
No, the, the assessor clerk will handle all, all of that.
That's what I meant. I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you were talking about the clerk.
Yeah, yeah, the assessor clerk will have many duties actually, that will maintain lots of what the list is currently do. Uh, will just remove the technical out to, uh,
Professional.
professional, which will work a long way to keeping our, our assessments pretty standardized.
And the assessor's clerk will not be elected by the people, she will be appointed by us.
Yes.
Or appointed by us.
She'll be a town employee.
She'll be a town employee with all the benefits that go with that.
Mm-hmm. And of course, it's a part-time job. It's, uh, be fifteen hours a week. Currently, the listers, the elected listers do nine hours a week, but this will allow us to spread out. The one person will be addressing more items and be more trained than the current listeners. Just, I just want to keep bringing that up because that's a big item for the town meeting.
Twenty and thirty years ago, the, the assessors or the listers were very important people. They, they set the price of your house. And it was always a, but now the state told us we had to get professionals and who was the best thing because and anytime, anytime there's a grievance, it's laid right out.
Yeah.
Professional praises says, this is what, it's a praise for a professional and there's hardly ever an argument, so.
Yeah, and I'm working on a new contract with, with Nimric, who is providing our current assessor because we've had over time, uh, we've had over time individual assessors with their own companies. But the problem with that is there's, there's no backup if something go on. With Nimric, who has multiple assessors, you know, we're never gonna hit the part where, you know, suddenly they're gone and we're stuck with ten days to file a document for the grand list. So I, I'm going to, that's unfortunate to be dealing with kind of a larger company and getting this done. So if there's not any questions, I was, yes, we'll move on because I just got an unstable internet message. So I don't know if this tweet is hitting our lines, but maybe we should go to that. Because this is required by law that you make a statement on the bylaws tonight, so maybe we'll go back to that.
Okay. So we're back up to, uh, a public hearing on proposed bylaws. Bylaws changes. Okay, this was, Chris, Chris Williams came in and presented it to us. It had to do with having a kennel, dog kennel in town.
You know, the kennels.
Uh, no more, you couldn't have an airport, you had a helicopter pad and.
Well, there was, uh, changes of the boundary line adjustments, uh, kennels bylaws, pools bylaw, uh, change of grandfathering of commercial uses, and of course, as you said, the helipads.
It, it's, it's up to us if we don't want to make any more changes and the public doesn't come to us and have a question very much. We, we will make a motion to send this, have this printed as is on the ballot and sent to the public to be voted on in March.
Yes, and the, the motion would be the select board puts the bylaw, uh, suggestion before the voters for adoption.
Our motion that we have the bylaw adjustments to the voters for adoption?
Second.
That's a motion by Mike, second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Carry four zero zero. Any other business? We've got through it. We thought this would be a long one.
I thought this was gonna be a very long meeting.
Yeah.
This is, this is pretty quick.
I know, I do. Okay, also, that creepy sound kept us moving along.
I know.
What's that, wind coming down, a steeple or something?
No, it's, it's, the door needs to be replaced and that's just wind.
I thought it was somebody working downstairs. That's the wind.
That's the wind. You should have heard it when they, they didn't cut back the branches and the branches were like screeching across the glass and that. I was in your office one night, you know, with, with the things on there, I'm like.
I have a good thing off it, yeah. Wow, that's the wind.
Yeah.
Any comment from you, John?
No, not really.
Okay.
I just saw a couple items that I have interest in and didn't know where they were at, but I found.
You all set now?
Well, getting there.
Okay.
You know, it was mentioned about the boundary line adjustment thing. Probably have some interest in that and and also the airstrip thing. I'm not sure, you know, where those are. What's behind those?
I think it's mostly helicopters.
Mm-hmm.
Because what's, what the comment was is that these people are coming up from New York City and Connecticut that are millionaires buy a second home up here, have a little farm or something like that and decide to come back, fly, either fly in or come by helicopter to their second residence. And the V L T C made the suggestion to our planning board that you may want to put something in that would stop that from being a nuisance, noise nuisance and all that sort of stuff. I, I, I hesitated too, but I didn't know, I didn't have a good argument not to do it. I, I know you've got a plan, so.
I think one idea is that, you know, we have a state airport so close to Shaftesbury that, you know, it's pretty easy. You can land helicopters there and, uh, people do, uh, and so uh, we have, people landing private, private helicopters could really upset neighbors, so.
I think, yeah, I think it was more of a noise thing, John.
Yeah.
And I think, I guess I don't want to be quoted, but the boundary line adjustment was just cleaning up some language, I think, that would make it easier for the D R B or even the zoning administrator to just kind of clerically deal with boundary line adjustments, especially to, it was a simplifying.
It'll be a good thing.
Yeah.
The biggest controversy is the dog kennels. Uh, there's nothing in our, not, up until now, there's nothing in there for a dog kennel. I guess even the town of Bennington doesn't have anything, so. Um, if, if there is one in Bennington, it's because their grandfather did and that sort of thing, but they tried to come up with enough to keep people, it's gonna be a, they got some pretty far setbacks and all that sort of stuff.
And that was something they talked about for a very long time and had input from a lot of people, so that is the product of a lot of debate and talk.
Good, well, thank you.
Okay, my, thank you.
So, any other business? Entertain a motion to adjourn? Alute?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed. So carry four zero zero. Thank you, John.